Stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call order, roll call. Starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Schorn.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Alden.
Motion for approval of tonight's agenda. Anything further?
We got here, we gave you a pretty good load today.
What would you approve? A motion to approve, we got a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Takes us to finance and budget, you've got the accounts payable with the additional listing there, any questions? Director McCarthy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second then.
Questions?
I was just curious, why do we need our membership to ask app?
That is for the music or the pool.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. I'll take this reading the motions of general business, start with the annual meeting. Appointments, designations, twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. Mayor King has submitted his twenty twenty-four appointments and designations for consideration to twenty twenty-four council boards, commissions, meeting schedule is also part of this packet. It's all there in front of you. Uh, council action requests is to approve the twenty twenty-four plans, twenty twenty-four council boards commission meeting schedules submitted. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Uh, ordinance amendment for the library bylaws. It's been requested by the library board and recommended by library director decree that ordinance chapter two, section two eighty point zero one established. Be amended to the library board consisting of nine members shall be continued for the city, this is a change from seven members. Council action requests is to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one and ordinance amending section two eighty point zero one established. Questions or discussion about that? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second then.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, approval of agent resolution on tort liability waiver is... This is gonna get here later, did she get them up?
Alicia is sick, she's got COVID, so she sent us enough to let us know, so she will not be here tonight.
So... Uh, first American insurance was, was to give us an overall review of twenty twenty-four coverage and discuss municipal tort liability options, how do we wanna handle this administrative?
We'll have to do it.
Okay.
Ready for what?
Yeah, there's no change from what?
Change.
Okay.
Right.
Council action requested it would be to approve Alicia Nelson's city's insurance agent for twenty twenty-four. Two motions here, Sheriff.
Yes, please.
First motion would be approving Alicia Nelson's city's insurance agent for twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second then.
We have any questions or discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, here against, say nay. That passes. Second motion would be to approve or deny resolution on municipal tort liability. Uh, make a motion to approve as we usually do?
So if we do not waive it, then it limits how much each one, that's what we used, we did last year.
Yeah, and that's historically what you do, so you want to prove that you are not waiving.
I'll make a motion to not waive the limits. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. They'll take us to a twenty twenty-four compliance report, state of Minnesota pay equity. Due to local government pay equity act, Minnesota states statutes four seventy-one point nine nine one to four seventy-one point nine nine nine, we are required to complete a pay equity implementation compliance report every three years. Our report must be submitted to the Minnesota Department of Management and Budget by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Council is required to review this report before submitting to the state. Did you all review it?
It didn't, that doesn't mean anything.
Is it what equitable to you? Looks pretty equitable.
I can't read these phrases.
Yes.
So the council action request would be to accept the pay equity implementation compliance report. Questions or discussion? Motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Engineer tech position, approval of job description and advertisement. As you recall, the city has reviewed over the past few years the need for an in-house engineering inspection tech position. With the continuing amount of city projects in work, not only with our capital improvement projects and the subsequent project inspection responsibilities as the city's representative, but with the additional planning zoning applications and issues, subdivisions, development applications and projects, city utility and infrastructure inspection review, utilities, right away easement, sidewalks, trails, lighting, some facilities, structural, et cetera. The need has become more apparent as the city continues to grow. This position will also provide the city with in-house assistance for GIS, GPS and utility mapping, easement and right-of-way surveying, location, staking work along with supplemental work for the other departments as may be needed. I'm busy guy. The city has also reached a threshold of average yearly cost of this work being higher now than are now exceeding what we can be saved by having to work completed by staff. And then that person is available for the above city needs year round. The funding that is now set aside for the yearly contracted help will now be reutilized into a fund for this engineering tech position and associated office and field vehicle and equipment. The personnel committee recently met, minister twelve nineteen twenty-three attached in council packet to review these needs. An outline of the proposed job description and the proposed budget funding. After discussion by all, it is the consensus of the committee to recommend to the council the addition and advertisement of a new engineering tech position at pay grade fourteen, which is currently with what staff found in other area regional recent job findings. Council action requested consideration of the new position and advertise for the position. Now, discussions, questions?
Yeah, obviously we're not giving up on Jenna's work and SEH's, um, engineering for many of our things. This will be supplemental, that will help her as well as the staff, so. And then there'll be immediate things that obviously will put them to, uh, let you solidly out there.
Questions from the table, discussion? Come on.
So, who's actually doing this work now?
SEH, we hired them.
Oh, okay, so... Okay, that answers my question.
Any other questions?
No, not for me.
Josh, is there anything?
No, I think everything's there.
Okay. All righty, you got everything in your packet there to look at, look it over. Council action requested consideration of the new position and advertise for the position. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is the lot split variance, six eighteen, second Avenue Northeast. Bill Barnwell has submitted an application for a lot split and five point seven nine feet lot frontage variance for required seventy feet per section, per section one three three zero point zero five development requirements. The attached survey shows the shared driveway easement and there will be separate water sewer lines for each parcel. The planning commission has recommended approval, subject to both parcels stay as residential use. Okay, so the lot split, split. To approve the lot split variance as requested is what our action will be, but do we have any questions or discussion on this? Right? Uh-huh. You're right.
So basically he's having an easement in the middle to share that driveway so that it can be two separate houses. It was kinda confusing to us when we first went over it.
I was just wondering what that five point seven nine foot lot frontage is.
So if you look at parcel A right there, it's supposed to be seventy feet and by putting the easement in, it shrinks it down five point some feet.
Okay.
So the backside would still be bigger than that, but.
Sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
The slot split does not show the sanitary sewer easement, which is necessary for their services.
So is that mean we're gonna table it or do we make a motion pending that?
No, it doesn't get recorded until we get the, we'll get the correct one, I think I just attached the wrong one. So yes, subject to the correct survey showing the lot's sewer services. I think I just put the wrong one on there.
Okay, so the motion would be to approve the lot split variance.
Subject to.
Subject to. Anything else showing up as requested?
Yes, body sewer easement and that it only stays residential.
It stays residential. How many have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, next will be a public works.
Wouldn't be immediate if you weren't buying a new truck for Sean. Right, I'm sorry, I just said it wouldn't be immediate if you weren't buying you a new truck.
Twenty twenty-four capital equipment plan replaced two thousand five Ford Ranger. As per the approved twenty twenty-four capital equipment plan and the twenty twenty-four budget, this pickup is scheduled for replacement. We received bids from Rochester Chevy for thirty-five thousand one hundred ninety-nine and from House Chevy for thirty-five thousand three hundred for this replacement with additional cost for tax licensing, we've been selling the Ranger via public surplus once the new one has been received. State contract prices being used, staff is recommending our local dealership, House Chevy, for this purchase. Approve or deny the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Colorado four-wheel-drive crew cab truck, Ranger's two-wheel drive, right? No, it's before, no, Ranger's a two-wheel drive, isn't it? It's Ranger, correct. So as you can see, there's a hundred and one dollars difference. How long would it take to get this one?
I think you said by March.
Okay.
Not like last time, we waited a year and a half. But things are better, no, we, we wanted to get the double cab or the, but they don't make those, you can't, they're not making nothing else, we had to go through that.
All right, guys, need a motion to approve or deny the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Chevy Colorado four-wheel-drive crew cab truck from House Chevy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Do we have questions or discussion? Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next, FEMA grant, authorizing acceptance of grant for circle fire department. The circle fire department is partnering with area fire departments for a region grant for SCBA equipment. If the application is successful, the city will have a match requirement not to exceed twenty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars fifty-eight cents. The fire department has the funding available in their budget to cover this match. Council action requested approve the resolution authorizing the acceptance of FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four federal emergency management agency assistance to firefighters grant. I'll move to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? When will they find out? Has it been?
They're, they're still unprocessed, they're not even together, but this was something that was required by the community since we weren't together on it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, massage therapy licensing, ordinance creation, first reading. Massage therapy license, the public safety committee has met and are recommending approval of an ordinance relating to massage therapists and massage therapy licensing. Staff conducted research and is presenting the attached ordinance for approval. It is noted that they are recommending the license fee be set as part of the city's fee schedule at one hundred dollars. Now, it's eleven pages, you wanna read it? Nope. All right, this, it'll be available at city hall for anyone who wants to come and get it, or it'll probably be available online, I imagine, too.
And make a link.
For the public, anybody wants to look at it.
Pretty much mirrors what the county has, right?
There's Rochester.
Yeah, and they specifically, and they specifically mind that, so if they deal with enforcement, they're dealing with the same rules throughout the counties.
So your next meeting, um, before you adopt it will be a public hearing?
This is the first reading of the ordinance and will be brought back to council at the twenty, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting for... No action needed tonight, please. Library addition project. Construction manager, RFP. Glad for the proposal. Further recommendation of the library board and subsequent approval by the city council for continued planning on a proposed renovation and expansion of the library for which the general architectural concept design has been completed. The next step in the process is to solicit RFP's request for proposals for construction manager. This process worked out very, very well for us, efficiently for the fire station project, now being recommended to utilize once again on this library project. The construction manager would be point of contact for all construction coordination and communication between the architects, city staff, home state county building inspectors, subsequent contractors, subcontractors awarded various construction components of the project. The costs of these services are anticipated to be in the range of two to six percent of the actual construction cost estimate. It would be covered under the library reserve funds and ordered budgeted accordingly with project revisions. Proposals would or could then be interviewed, reviewed by a committee made up of a combination of board and council members along with staff for a final recommendation to the full city council for approval. So all we're asking for tonight is to approve or deny preparing and soliciting for RFPs for construction management services for the proposed library renovation expansion.
Don't have a set schedule on the soliciting yet, but we would like approval to get the, uh, RFP request.
Get him out or sort of the, the next step would be to interview and possibly hire. So, questions or discussion on that?
No, we're not, we're not there yet.
There's no schedule yet for the solicitation part where...
Oh, okay.
That will be eventually done.
Absolutely, we're just preparing.
Right at this time, yeah. We'll, we'll give you or bring back the schedule for the solicitation.
You have a statement?
Motion to approve it, move forward.
We got a motion to approve, move forward.
A second.
We got a second, questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Earn, sick and save time. This is a state law update. No action required on this. A new Minnesota state law, earn, sick and save time. Excuse me. Passed during the twenty twenty-three legislative session, chapter fifty-three, that will require employers to provide employees with earned, sick and safe, safe leave. The new law requires all employers, private and public, to provide all employees with earned, sick and save time beginning January one, twenty twenty-four. All Minnesota cities will therefore need to be in compliance with the new paid leave benefit for their employees by the above date as well. The new law applies to any employer with one or more employees, so there's no small city exemption. All Minnesota cities will be covered. In addition, this new law covers all employees, including part-time and temporary employees, with established guidelines. Cities that provide earned, sick and save time employees under a paid time off policy are not required to provide additional sick, additional earned, sick and save time as long as the policy meets the same conditions or exceeds the minimum standard of the law. Our city will be able to meet or revise to meet requirements where needed.
I'm guessing that we already, our employees already get enough hours, but perhaps you might have to expand the scope a little bit as far as what they could take the days off for? Cause I know they had to a little bit in Rochester.
Mainly be for our part-time. Harley did a lot of research to make sure most of our full-time employees should all be covered under our current.
So the one thing that happened in Rochester, and I don't know if it would be affected here, but they did have to expand a little bit because your sick time can only be used for certain things, and now that had to be expanded because it's sick and save time, so that basically you can take off whatever you want.
We only have, we have PTO.
Okay, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, so we're going.
All right, since this is now required Minnesota state law, there's no action needed by the council.
Save time.
All right.
Sorry, I can't, I mean, I'm sorry, I can't do this.
That takes us out of general business to the mayor's staff to solve the reports. Mayors report for tonight. Not very long report, but we're just starting on a new year, so we haven't had a lot of action yet. But we will send our sympathies to the families of Dorothy Lassick, Mark Nelson, Travis Hatchard, Dewey Stansfield and Hillary Gerber. Zion Lutheran Church will hold a blood drive on Monday, January fifteenth. And this is law enforcement appreciation day, we appreciate.
Free chili for lunch.
Sweet chili.
Free chili.
But we really appreciate you too, Justin.
We love you, man.
Thanks for paying me.
As long as you keep doing the job you're doing, you'll keep getting paid from here. You do a great job up there, too, thanks. I don't know where we'd be without you guys. That's all I've got for tonight, so I'll take us to the city administration report.
Uh, not too much to highlight, the report's in your packet, I did put in red the new code red. And so we've been working with, uh, John Jacobson, the emergency management director for the county, and he is getting it coordinated slowly but surely. And, uh, so as soon as he, I guess I'll just say feels comfortable that everything works for us, then we'll start that process for the public.
So we're not signing up yet, as of yet?
Quite yet, he's putting together like a crib sheet so that the citizens sign up, because I'll just say way easier than what we had to do. And so hopefully it'll turn out that way.
So now that we're getting snow, basically it'll be on the city's Facebook page, it'll be out, it'll be out there in social media.
Once we're ready, yes, to launch.
Cause the other one's not, we're not getting the phone calls.
Yes, we put it on those now to warn people.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
For just regular snow.
Social media.
Right, right.
The other one expired October third, of course.
Angela put one out today.
Yeah, I saw, I saw, but I'm here on. And transfer the names of the new one?
No.
So everyone's just, everyone's aware, everyone has to re-sign up.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
And so obviously as a courtesy to our public works crews, we're certainly hopeful all our citizens, when the snows come, just help us out, get off the streets, it's safer for everybody and, and then once we're ready to go, we'll... Um, cause the county told us, not all the cities do it, we're one of the few, I shouldn't say few cities. We're one of the cities in this area that do this program as an extra courtesy to notify citizens or remind them of all.
Well, it's cause some of the other towns are, you say no parking on every one day, but one year, period, don't worry about the snow or not.
It's a great service, obviously we wanna re-up it, but, um, until it's re-upped, just everybody help us out, so.
All right, any other questions for the city administrator? All right, thank you, Bill. Hope you had a good Christmas and a happy new year.
All family, boom, so work out nice.
Next, Carla, finance director report.
We had the auditors in on the twenty-first of December for the pre-audit, we had some new auditors in that we work with, that seemed like everything went very well, we were able to get all the information to them as well as, um, still working through the portal, um, adding additional information as needed and as requested as it finishes up. Um, so finishing up on the twenty twenty-three budget, uh, twenty twenty-four budget is all loaded in budget books. I have paper copies of budget books if you would like them, or I can email them out to you if you would rather have them that way. Um, and some of the, and so just let me know what you prefer on that. Uh, then also with that E S S T law, we will have to just do some updates to the personnel policy to make sure that's all included in there and there's more provision on that.
Any questions for Carla? All right, hope you enjoyed your time off during the holidays too, Carla.
Uh, public works, Sean.
Reports in there, other than just a little bit of what the snow today.
So what did you do at the shop as far as cleaned up a bunch of area, just kinda made a makeshift office for the new guy then, when he?
Kinda.
Yeah?
I mean, was there any, they thought all the stuff, Tony's kinda taking charge of the shop now, or he thinks, oh, he wants it? Cause he's kind of in charge of the shopper, right? So he's organizing things how he wants them, the guy's been pulling stuff off and obviously that shop gets all the diesel exhaust and stuff like that, so they were cleaning things and repainting, stuff like that.
But the new engineer tech position's gonna be office out of there too, right?
So we flipped the two offices, I'll be in the smaller office and then put the two in the bigger office.
Thanks for cutting it all. So they got the cedar all up out there now, huh? I gotta drag the lighter again.
Cedar's up, the siding's up on the front half, they, uh, ran out of siding, so they had to wait, you got more yesterday, should've been working out today.
They've been out there since before.
It looks, I like the siding, I think it looks nice.
It looks great.
The storm was supposed to start this week and I haven't seen him yet, we'll see with the weather if he does it, but he's supposed to be here anytime now to get the storm on the front, which will really spruce it up too, but it looks, looks good, hasn't it?
Yeah. He's looking, he's looking good, yeah. Couple of goats, feel bad for them, all the goats there, that's mad.
Yeah, that's odd, yeah.
Say a little prayer for the rest of them. I hope you had a good time over the holiday, Sean.
Thanks.
Any questions for him? Any more questions, tell the guys, thanks. They hit the streets again tonight or they could've done?
Nope, they should be good. Coming in, we will come in tonight and start flooding already.
All right.
So, and we're gonna have guys all night, we'll have guys all day tomorrow, just put the cold stew it.
I thought you were starting a rank out there by highway thirty for a while, didn't you?
Yeah. Could've just done that, safe flood.
Put some boards up around here, just let it keep filling up. Or we can start going downtown when you keep bumping the street for a while there. All right, city engineers report, Jenna, you got anything for us?
Uh, we did before the end of the year have our, um, neighborhood meeting for the twenty twenty-four C I P. Um, very good turnout for that, a lot of questions answered and, um, just wanna mention if anyone did get a comment card, please return those to city hall so we can incorporate those items into plans, um, which you will be hopefully approving next meeting.
Did you yell that for the sidewalk thing yet?
No.
Really?
Um, it was fairly well received. A lot of conversations were about driveways and, um, and then some drainage questions and issues, so some grading that will need to go off of public gridway in order to fix. So, uh, we're currently working on that in the plans and we'll have to make sure that all parties or all property owners agree with the need for the grading, but something we are looking to help fix. We did get requests for more trees to come down than originally had been planned, um, and we have those marked in too. So.
Group that.
Yes.
Any question, other questions for Jenna?
No.
Thanks, Jenna. Your holidays went well too.
Thanks.
No fire chief report tonight, we have a library director here, but he didn't come prepared.
I got a couple things.
Oh, he's always prepared.
Um, so.
You know, you got a new building, you know, it's like every meeting.
Well, I have something to do with it.
Jeez. Um, this month's kit goes, we did kind of a soft launch, but it goes live formally tomorrow, it is a, um, three D paper animal puzzle that kids can either make a macaw, a panda, a turtle, a sloth, this is almost like a personality test, a sloth, an eagle or a spider, so...
So, um, that's, uh, they're very cute. We bought, we are gonna have about a hundred and twenty of them available for folks, um, and with the snowstorm, even though they weren't quite ready, they're kind of repassing some out, uh, to folks.
Is that a ninja turtle or just a?
Just, yeah, just traditionally, pre-mutated, I think is what they call the kids. And, um, uh, we are also, um, we have a lot of books for sale at the library right now. We've been reading our nonfiction and large print collections and juvenile fiction right now, so, um, bring on the readers and, uh, all cash goes, all cash our book sales goes towards the library expansion, so.
Good.
Shop away.
All right. Shop away.
Oh, one more thing. Uh, our adult winter reading program, um, starts, um, Monday, January twenty-second. Sorry, I didn't mention that.
One second. All right. Hope you had a good Christmas too, Lynn.
Thanks, Nick.
No pool director? Community Mission Board reports, Chamber of Commerce. Got the January newsletter, Bill's got something here.
Oh, well, you'll see it, the newsletter. Uh, they have their banquet coming up, so as is tradition, if any of you and your, um, boyfriends, girlfriends, spouses, whatever wanna attend, let us know and we'll get you signed up. That's on the nineteen.
Nineteen?
Next.
Next one.
A, we're leaving.
And then just as a heads up, and you'll hear more about it as time gone, uh, goes by, but you know, they revised the winter fest schedule to be more mid-winter. And so that's gonna be in February, I believe it's the eighth, ninth, tenth weekend.
Believe it or not. Community and daddy daughter dance. All right. Take care of chamber stuff, it's all there in your packet. E D A H R A, we meet next week, finance. We got anything coming up?
We will, um, as auditors kind of get through things, we will have some stuff coming up then.
Library?
Meet in February.
February.
Park Board?
No. Excuse me, we met last night for two and a half hours. Jeff Byer was, he's chairman again. Uh, they're moving along and on the, uh, bear, um, um, we had a long discussion, I guess, about, uh, um, DISC Golf Park and Bear Cave. We had several people come in, um, over the last, say, twelve to eighteen months wanting things done, so we kind of told them that they need to form their own committee or board and have one person come in and speak for them all. So we discussed that. Um, Meadow Park North, the ball fields, they're still working on that by spring, late spring, summer. That'll look different down there, they put a lot of work into that. Anything else for Sean?
The rest of it's all just up there.
Yeah.
Same with the year stuff? Good. Something's good. Personals?
Minutes are in there. We, uh, just approved that position for public quarters.
Land zoning?
Minutes are in there. Lot split, we've talked about that.
Public safety?
Minutes are in there.
Your calls for service or you just, are they, are they in the packet here, aren't they?
I've got the, the calls for the whole year in there.
Okay.
Throughout the whole year, we had fifty-three hundred calls for service. Now, I mapped those out, about rough estimate of two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two of those are self-initiated through our, our people. Um, I'm only counting bike stops, community services, dares, K nine demos, K nine trainings, traffic enforcement and traffic stops. That's not including drug stops, DUIs, ordinance violations, paper services, parking violations, parking enforcement, uh, predatory offender registry checks, project lifesavers, search warrants and normal warrants. So with all those together, if I put them all together, it's over three thousand. That means that our calls for service is about sixty percent of the time deputy, um, started. They, we, we've started about sixty percent of it. Now, I took all those ones out because we can randomly get someone saying, hey, this person's smoking weed outside and that'll pop up as a drug, but the majority of those drugs that are on there are from deputies finding something in a car or something like that and they're changing it to a drug from a traffic stop. That being said, I also have warrants on there. It's deputies initiating, doing, partaking in the warrant search or whatever it is, um, but that obviously comes from a judge. So without all those things together, like fifty-one percent is self-initiated activity, compared to calls that are just coming in.
Do you know what last year's calls were by chance, Justin?
I don't know. I don't know. I could find it out.
Just curious.
I could look, I could look for it, um, and get back to you at some point.
Well.
Took away my system to, uh, where I could look up all these calls and I could go through another person.
Well, thank you. Once again, thank all you law enforcement people for all you keeping us safe. Any other questions for Justin? Public Works? Nothing right now. Ready?
Uh, no report. Um, I'll be filling in, um, for a while right now with Joya's absence and then we're now part of a community councils. It's like a subcommittee of Ready as a whole and it's just us communities that are a part of Ready. And so we have our first meeting of the year on Thursday, so I'll be there for that.
Rule call?
Uh, haven't met for the last three months, so it looks like in January here at the end of the month we'll meet again.
Transit Library Committee, nothing at this time. Under Communications, you have Charter Communications talking about ratings. This gets sent out by Charter to all the customers and stuff too, or done?
Probably their billings, um, for those that have Charter.
Open mic. Looks like we got nobody here, man. That takes us to the final first, the first final motion of the year.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, you got a motion, we got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.